Assessor?
And I'm the Deputy Assessor, Joe St. Peter.
So in your packets that we provided, we are here tonight to ask you to reconsider the Regulatory Advisory Board that was created in 2021 and break it back out into the Board of Assessment Review and the Zoning Board of Appeals. So in the cover letter that I sent with the packet, it just explains when the Regulatory Advisory Board was created, which combined the two boards. It changed the number of members from five to seven when it was created. And when it was created, the Board of Assessment Review had a full board, five-member full board, which actually we hadn't had in quite some time. And when it was, when the board was created, the Board of Assessment Review was dissolved and the Regulatory Advisory Board was created, we had some terms that were coming, due, coming up for our members. And when their terms expired, they chose not to serve again on the board. I don't know if the reason was because the boards were combined, which brings a lot more responsibility. You have to, when you're on the Board of Assessment Review, we have training that the MMA puts on every year, and we encourage our board members to attend the training because the Board of Assessment Review is regulated by the tax law, Title 36. Because when you have an appeal hearing, it's a judicial hearing, basically, and the laws of the state have to be followed. And so it's a lot to learn when you first start if you've never served on that type of board before. So in addition to that, when the boards were combined, and now you have to learn all of the zoning laws and follow the laws that regulate the appeals that pertain to zoning variances, I've explained it in here. We've discussed it, the Assessing Department has discussed it, and because we now only have two people on our board, we don't even have a quorum. So is it because of the added responsibility? I can't say that for sure, but in my opinion, I think that has something to do with it, getting volunteers to serve. We have a pending appeal right now, a tax appeal. We don't have a quorum. We can't hold the appeal. And luckily for us, we asked for an extension from the taxpayer until we can seat a board, get volunteers and seat a board and have a quorum to make a decision on this tax appeal. That's a lot to ask from a taxpayer who thinks they're being overvalued and their abatement has been denied already, and now they have to wait because we don't have a board to make a decision. And they have no other avenue. They could apply to Superior Court, and Superior Court has no jurisdiction to hear their appeal. So they're just going to remand it back to the Board of Assessment Review to a board that doesn't have a quorum. So it's a lot of runaround. So tonight, we're, we are asking for you to reconsider, separate the boards back out again, and hopefully we can seat our board and get some members and follow the process in a timely manner.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council? Council, either.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment. I never was particularly fond of this Regulatory Advisory Board just because it seemed sort of vague and broad, whereas the two committees that existed before were more limited in scope. I was on the Board of Appeals, I think it was on with your father, Bill Vassar, years ago. It was very simple. You know, you, you had a mission, you would get appeals from the public and then you would respond. Didn't meet that often. I think now it's probably very rare. And then in the case of Board Assessment Review, I think that's pretty rare, too. So it's a lighter lift for people if they're on a board that doesn't meet that often versus this thing where they don't really know what they're getting themselves into. I think that might be, if I were looking at it, it's like, I don't even know what that is, I'm not sure I want to do that, versus these two are very distinct and fairly limited, so they might be easier to fill. I'm thinking of that from the Appointment Committee standpoint, just trying to fill positions.
That, that was our thinking as well. I mean, we, before, is this on? Before we had five, a full board, they were, they were trained. As soon as the Regulatory Advisory Board came on, they all jumped ship. They, they, because, and I think that ambiguity was part of the problem, is that they just didn't understand, and we, we hope to bring it back to a clearer place.
Anything else from the council? So, Mr. Manager, I'm assuming that the next step of this is you will prepare appropriate orders to come before the council here in the near future to be able to take action to sunset the Regulatory Advisory Board and reform the, the other two boards, is that correct?
That's correct. You'll get it, you'll start this at the next meeting.
Okay, anything else on this item? Great, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving back to Item C, Ordinance 2812042023, a discussion on the pending matter that we'll see later tonight. Mr. Cousins will provide us information on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Eric settles in, we typically will have Items Workshop before a council meeting. This one, based on the direction and the timing, we didn't have that. So we want to make sure you have an opportunity to ask any questions regarding the action that'll be taking place tonight. This is an opportunity for you to do that with Eric, being able to answer questions regarding, regarding this. Eric provided you some background information. I don't think we need to go through that whole presentation just for the sake of time tonight, but I think you got, you got good materials that hopefully you were able to review. The question, you know, I think what Eric will be able to do for you right now is just answer any questions regarding that specific section, which would be Ordinance 26, that we're looking at this evening, and we'll be ready to answer any questions you have on that.
Any questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor, just a comment. I'm thinking, you know, after hearing about the impact on some people and difficulties and working with staff because they've had something planned and they're in the middle of it, and now they're, you know, this is a disruption to, they're replacing a failing system in a couple cases. I wonder if maybe another way of dealing with it would be rather than to delay the implementation, the applicability date, to create some level of limitation on permits of new construction? And I'm not sure what the number would be, but if it were less than what could have been allowed under the previous zoning, maybe that would be a place to start.
So you're, you're referring to Ordinance 28, ah, excuse me, Ordinance 26, which is the items in the watershed, is that correct?
I'm on the wrong one? Oh, I apologize. That's okay.
Yeah, that's okay, I think we understood. Yeah, the comments, so on, on, on 28, this is the applicability date for the general business zone. Are there any questions on, on that particular item? Okay, if not, I-
Mr. Mayor, I think, I think 28 is the watershed overlay.
Is the text amendment.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. So if I, if, yeah, you got it right, I apologize. They're backwards to the, to the, the items that we'll have on the agenda. So any, any further questions on 28?
So, yeah.
I think 28 is the applicability date. Page six, council's considering delayed applicability date, this ordinance 28.
Yeah, both of these will propose to change the applicability date to July 1st for, for the two ordinances. And I think, I, I think the point that Eric was making, correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, in, in the items in the watershed that included the issues about the septic inspection and included the issues about agricultural uses and potentially whether there should be any newer expanded septic systems, I think the point I got from the materials you provided is that there may be some administrative burdens on your office if there is an applicability date, and perhaps a, a better path forward is to just deal with the order, which will be item number three under new business, and, and insert a date by which these reports might have to be brought back to the council. Is that a fair assessment?
Correct, just so the property owner can work to a known standard until that, until that time.
So I think on this one, if the council, if, if that's the sense of the council, then I think the way to proceed with this would be to, because of the order in the agenda is when we get to this item, which would be number one under new business, that, ah, excuse me, number two under new business, that we would table that so we can take up item three first and potentially amend that with a reporting date. Does that make sense?
That makes sense, and I think it gives us an opportunity to involve the stakeholders that we understood you wanted to ensure were involved in that.
Okay, any questions on item 28? That's the, the septic and ag issues in the watershed. Okay, if there aren't any, then the next one, Eric, is 26, and my apologies again, that's the one that has the change in the applicability date relative to the general business zoning change at the south side of the lake.
And that would do exactly that, delay the applicability date. I know there was some discussion about the use in the general business zoning district being a concern, as well as you've heard from constituents with concerns about the buffer that was in an earlier version. I think from staff's perspective, the buffer piece may not be necessary, and it might actually make it harder to create the traffic improvements or intersections that any potential development of that site might require, and may make it more difficult to merge the entrances that the city uses to access their operation center. Then we're happy to answer any questions, but staff didn't take, you know, a strong opinion on, we didn't see the same impacts to the broader public as we did with the other applicability date change.
Any questions from the council on Ordinance 26?
Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, our vote on this today is to send it to the planning board, or is it to enact the delay?
So the way that this would work is, what's in the packet is a first reading. Since this is an ordinance, two, two readings would be required. It's also required that since this is a text amendment change to a zoning ordinance, that it's reviewed and we get a recommendation from the planning board. So the way that this would work is that should the, should the council- So, the way that this would work is that should the, should the council vote in favor of the change in the applicability date, that would then be transmitted to the Planning Board. They will have a review and provide recommendations back. It would come back to the council. We would have a scheduled public hearing, and then a second reading in which, if it was a favorable vote, would be final adoption of that change to the ordinance.
No further questions on, on this one? That being the case, then the, we'll adjourn from the work session and-
Yeah, if I could just, regarding the fund balance, it's, it's on the agenda. I just want to make sure you have all the materials for that. If there are any questions regarding those two items that we're looking to bring forward through the fund balance allocation, one being $500,000 for the workers' comp, $500,000 for the Norway Second Sheet Arena. That's number, rink number two. We'll answer those questions. You've got the materials regarding the rink. And then also, you've got, received the information regarding where does that put us within the fund balance? And we'll, we'll set at 13.7% of a fund balance, with the anticipation that we've already closed out FY '23. And FY '23, without going through the audit, we're anticipating anywhere's between $2.5 to $3 million in fund balance. Additional fund balance will be going in.
Any questions from the council on that matter, on the fund balance? Okay, seeing none, we'll adjourn the work session and we'll reconvene at 7:00 PM in the council chambers.
The January 2nd, 2024 meeting of the Auburn City Council is called to order. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. If we could have the councilors introduce themselves, starting with Counsel Gary.
All right. Good evening. I'm Belinda Gary. I'm a City Councilor at Large.
Rick Whiting, Ward One, City Councilor. Happy New Year.
Evening, Tim Cowan, City Council for Ward Two.
Jeff Hyman, Mayor.
Ben Weisner, City Council, Ward Four.
Leroy Walker, Ward Five, City Councilor.
Adam Platt, City Council at Large.
Phil Crowell, City Manager.
And note that Counsel Milks has an excused absence and will not be with us tonight. The first item on the agenda is consent items. These items include confirming police officers, waiving business license fee for the Danville Junction Grange and the poll opening times for 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Adoption of the consent items has been moved by Counsel Gary and seconded by Counselor Walker. Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Motion's adopted. The next item on the agenda is the minutes. Are there any corrections? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, sorry, Sue, I had meant to send you an email. Malcolm Philbrook with two O's. Yeah.
Motion to accept.
Seconded.
So, the motion to accept with the correction has been made by Counsel Walker, seconded by Counselor Platt. Is there any discussion? Counsel ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Motion's adopted. There are no communications, presentations- There are no communications, presentations, or recognitions tonight, and we'll move on to agenda item four, open session. This is a point in time when members of the public are invited to come forward and address the council on any item that's not on tonight's agenda. If you would like to present to the council, please approach the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, the open session will be closed, we'll move on. Unfinished business is the next agenda item. There is no unfinished business on the agenda. We'll move on to new business. The first item is ordinance 01-01-02-2024, amending Chapter 60 of the zoning ordinance to include an effective date and applicability date for ordinance 26-11-202023. And for clarification for the public, this is related to the December 4 action by the council to change the zoning at the south side of Lake Auburn to general business, and this item would change the applicability date of that action to July 1, 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by councillor Whiting and seconded by councillor Gary to adopt the ordinance as written. We'll now open public comment. If there's any members of the public that would like to address the council on this issue, please approach the podium, state your name and address.
Stephen Beal, 575 Johnson Road. I'm in favor of this motion to create this applicability date of July 1. Although the ordinance was adopted on December 4, there are a lot of uncertain geological factors affecting this parcel, much of which is an area that's 80 feet or more below the level of the road, part of which has been partially refilled and packed. There are many permitted uses in the general business zone, and it's uncertain whether these soils are going to be available and suitable for the utilization of this area by any one of the many 32 permitted uses. So there will be an opportunity by delaying or creating an applicability date of July 1 to create some method for the city to evaluate the quality of the soil in this area for any of the permitted uses, to say nothing of the special exception uses. And the other factor relating to this is the fact that the area a year and a half ago, almost two years ago, when it was rezoned to general business, which was then repealed, there was a 100-foot buffer strip created around the landfill parcel to the east, which belongs to the city, in order to provide means of access to get to that landfill parcel. Without going into all of the merits of the buffer, the council adopted that buffer by a vote of seven to zero at that time, and I think that the buffer ought to be continued or at least made a part of further discussion about the pit area because it does provide access to the landfill, which actually overrides into the parcels adjoining it, which are the subject of the rezoning. Thank you.
Pam Russo, 745 West Auburn Road. I'd just like to agree with Steve Beal 100% as my major in geology, and I agree with him 100%, but I also'd like to point out that the nearness to the watershed that has been determined and the amount of cars going right through that watershed, and I just have a major concern. I've looked at the plans that Mr. Gendron proposed to the state and the number of cars, and having that many go, we already have a lot of cars, but to increase it, I think it was like 722 during the peak hours, just in the morning. So I would like that also to be considered. Thank you.
Hi. Carrie Myrick, I live at 1010 Summer Street in Auburn. I was the person who wrote the petition that repealed the ordinance for the sand pit, and I too support Mr. Beal's position in regards to looking at the topography for the gravel pit and the rezoning of the general business for the sand pit and the gravel pit. We're really not sure what's in the topography of the sand pit that low at, you know, kind of 80 feet below, you know, the, you know, driving. I pass that way several times a day. I live in that area, and, you know, when we're up that high driving by, but, you know, that's quite a distance down below where a lot of that digging is going on, and I think we should just take some time and look to see what really is happening where they're doing a lot of the digging. We don't really know what's happening. We haven't had those studies done, so I think we should err on the caution, side of caution, and do our due diligence to see what's really happening there before we make some more decisions. So, thank you.
Are there other members of the public that wish to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment, discussion by the council. Is the council ready for the question? The vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Councillor Whiting?
Yes.
Councillor Cowan?
Yes.
Councillor Weisner?
Yes.
Councillor Walker?
Yes.
Councillor Platt?
Yes.
Councillor Gary?
Yes.
Six having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item on the agenda is ordinance 02-01-02-2024, amending Chapter 60 of the zoning ordinance to include an effective date and applicability date for ordinance 28-11-202023. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to table this ordinance.
Motion to table has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion to table by councillor Cowan and seconded by councillor Walker. Vote will, sorry, no discussion on tabling motion. Vote will be by show of hands, all in favor?
Point of order? To a date certain?
No, it's not a postponement, it's just a tabling action.
Until later in the meeting?
Until later in the meeting, yes.
All in favor? Six having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the tabling is adopted. The next item on the agenda will be order 04-01-02-2024, authorizing the city manager to direct staff to work with the agricultural working group, the Sustainability and Natural Resources Board, the Lake Auburn Water Protection Commission, the Planning Board, and other public stakeholders to review the adopted amendments and recommend any changes back to the council. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Moved by councillor Gary to adopt as written and seconded by councillor Walker. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the council on this issue? If so, please approach the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Shaw, Valley View Farm, Sopers Mill Road in Auburn. I am chair of the Natural Products and Agriculture Work Group, and I look forward to working with the city council, and we always have worked very well with staff, and I think this will be an exciting opportunity to have more of our members have a little more input in the role of retaining the resources of our very vast protected zone. We do have scheduled monthly meetings that will be held at the Auburn Senior Center the last Thursday of the month, and I will get those to Sue Clemens so that she can post them on the website, and I look forward to working with you all. Thank you. Thursday.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the council on this agenda item?
Stephen Beal again, still at 575 Johnson Road. I'm in support of this order. This actually combines elements of both the agricultural group activities, and because this ordinance was entirely structured relating to matters occurring within the watershed, it also includes the interests of the watershed group, and I recommend the adoption of this order and directive, and look forward to working with the various city staff members and other consultants who may be relevant to these items. Thank you.
Any other members of the public that would like to address the council on this Not seeing any, we'll close the public comment, discussion by the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councillor Weisner?
Thank you. I move to amend order 04-01-02-2024 by inserting at the end of the first sentence in the third paragraph the following language, "No later than the second regular city council meeting in April 2024."
Is there a second?
Second.
So there's a motion by councillor Weisner to amend order 04-01-02-2024 by inserting at the end of the first sentence in the third paragraph the following language, "No later than the second regular city council meeting in April 2024." Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I full support this, having read the materials provided by Eric's cousins and his team, I think it makes sense, it helps them deal with some potential administrative issues, so appreciate the amendment.
Other discussion by the council. So I think that the, a few things I would say about this, I think that the prior council did a lot of work on this and was trying to close out some of these issues by December 4, their last meeting. I think there were a lot of very positive things in this ordinance, it is 11 items in it, but there are some unanswered questions that perhaps we can improve on that are shown in the order, so I think it's a positive thing to engage the various stakeholders and see if in the near term we can clean up a few items here. Is the council ready for the question? The vote will be by vote of hands, all in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is, excuse me, the amendment is adopted and will return to the main motion. Is the council ready for the question? This is to adopt as amended order 04-01-02-2024. Vote will be by show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? The motion as amended is adopted. The next agenda item is item four, order 05-01-02-2024, authorizing staff to waive the permit fees for storm damage repairs. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It was moved to adopt as written by councillor Walker, seconded by councillor Whiting. Discussion by the council? Excuse me, public comment? Are there any members of the public comment that would like to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, discussion by the council. Councillor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a perfect way to help give back a little bit to our constituents, our homeowners and businesses that had to put out money to do repairs of this latest storm.
Other comments by the council? Mr. Manager, do you have any comments on this item?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I agree with you, councillor Gary. I think staff has been fielding calls regarding damages that were as a result of this previous storm. I don't, unless you had a business or a home that was directly impacted, you may not know the extent of the damage, but our staff and our team are working with constituents, business owners every day as it pertains to the storm. I'll have a little bit of my city manager report as I talk about just the recovery efforts that are still underway, but thank you.
I'd just like to thank staff for bringing it forward. I think it's sort of adding insult to injury, you know, if somebody's had major damage and then they get a bill for, you know, permit, you know, just to correct something that Mother Nature caused, this is a good thing.
Just one quick follow-up. I'm glad, councillor Whiting, glad you mentioned that. This was staff-driven, staff fielding these calls and putting this request in, so I'm really glad that they did that. Thanks.
Council ready for the question? The vote will be by show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next agenda item will be order 06-01-02-2024, approving the allocation of additional $1 million from the FY 2022 undesignated fund balance. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by councillor Walker to adopt the motion as written and seconded by councillor Cowan. Clarification for the public, this is to move $500,000 additional funding into the workers' compensation fund, and $500,000 into the Norway Savings Bank Arena project. This is additional monies to complement the $1 million that the prior council allocated on December 4, a half a million dollars to each of these purposes. Public comment on this item?
It says undesigned fund balance. I think you meant undesignated.
Yeah, yes, it is. Thank you very much. Undesignated fund balance. Any other public comments on this item?
Kathy Shaw, Sopers Mill Road, Auburn. So what does this do if, I understand that you probably won't answer me, or maybe you'll talk amongst yourselves, to our current undesignated fund balance then, when this $1 million additional dollars has been dropped down? Thank you.
So a question's been posed by the member of the public. I believe the city manager can provide some insight on that.
Thank you, Mayor. So what will take place with this $1 million? Will bring the, the policy currently with the undesignated fund is that the undesignated fund will remain between 10 and 14% is the policy recommendation. This will bring the undesignated fund as of the FY 20, FY 22 budget down to 13.73%. So it still keeps it very close to the top end of the policy. However, we know the FY 23 budget has also been closed, and we know that we'll see close to $2.5 to probably $3 million in additional funds from that fund balance that will bring that back up beyond the 14% that is currently through the audit process now, so we don't have the confirmed data on that, but we know that's, the conservative number would be $2.5 million.
Pam Russo, 745 West Auburn Road. Are there certain things that this money can go to, and I have nothing, again, my kids skate at Norway Savings Bank, and I'm certainly for the workman's comp, but is in the future skate at Norway Savings Bank, and I'm certainly for the workman's comp, but is, in the future, is this money also that could go for the unhoused or, you know, affordable housing or helping? Is that, is that something that can also be done with this money in the future? Not that I'd say, like I said, my kids skate at Norway. So, just a curious.
A question's been raised by the members of the public. I believe that the council has the authority to appropriate the undesignated fund balance in any way in which they could have originally allocated appropriated funds. Is that correct, Mr. Manager?
That's correct. And the action that was taken by the previous council did allocate funds for special services like food insecurity. Those funds, these funds that could come available after the next audit could certainly be applied to those types of accounting desires of the council.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the public on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Discussion amongst the council. Council ready for the question? The vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next agenda item is the second open session of the evening. Members of the public are invited to come forward and address the council on any item.
Will you take up the table?
So members of the public that would like to come forward and speak to the council on any item not on tonight's agenda can approach the podium, state your name and address, and provide your comments to the council. Seeing none, we'll close the second open session and we'll move on to reports. So for the mayor's report, I have a few items I'd like to thank and credit for some really outstanding work, the E911 Center, our fire department, police department, and Public Works for their response to the recent flooding event. I can tell you that I saw all the agencies out working hard and talking to a few of the firefighters and police officers. They handled many, many, many more calls than they would get in an average day, and I think it's a credit to our city staff and the response that they provided. The second item, I'd like to thank the city staff for putting on such a great event on New Year's Eve. I've had lots of positive comments from the community. It was really a great event. Lots of people really liked the drone show, and there's a huge amount of work that goes into this, planning it all through the year, and then starting early in the morning and going late into the night into the next morning to clean up. And kudos to the city staff for doing an excellent job. The last thing I would mention is there are a number of board and committee vacancies that are posted on the city's website that, for the Complete Streets Committee, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the Planning Board, and the Registration Appeals Board Chair. If people are interested in participating in any of these committees, please get your application into the city clerk by the 4th, as the Appointments Committee will be meeting in the next week to consider the application. That's all I have. We'll start on the far end with Council Platts. City council report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brief report from me. I, as the mayor's appointee, I attended my first school committee meeting two weeks ago. It was a fairly light agenda, not too much decided on, however, there was a nice presentation from the Fairview Children's Choir, which was very nice. Tomorrow will be the second meeting of the school committee, of the new session, and I'll be attending my first finance committee meeting for the school committee as well. So we'll report back on that hopefully at the next meeting.
Council Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Age-friendly, put on a great Thanksgiving, yeah, I wish, a great New Year's drop of the ball on New Year's Day with approximately 100 senior citizens that showed up. We had a great luncheon, and we had a lot of fun for that afternoon. Also, we will have an age-friendly meeting next Tuesday night at 5:30 at the Auburn Senior Citizens Home, and we'd love to have you come down to Patengill Park and be part of our age-friendly group. We talk about many things that go on in the city and activities that could go on if we have enough people to be part of it. So come and join us and listen to some of the things we talk about and have a little fun. Next Tuesday night, 5:30, Community Center.
Council Wisner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a great time attending the airport gathering. It was a great time to meet other pilots and citizens who are concerned about the airport. Look forward to working with the board in the future and the great things to happen at the Auburn, Auburn-Lowiston Airport. Thank you.
Council Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I haven't yet had meetings for the two boards, the Sustainability and the Lewiston-Auburn Transit, but getting connected and looking forward to those otherwise. Happy New Year to all.
Council Whiting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to echo thanks particularly Public Works up in the north end of town, I have a neighbor with an anemometer who's registered 70 and 75 mile an hour wind gusts. So hurricane-level winds, and he's halfway up the hill. I'm at the top of the hill. So I can imagine it might have even been higher winds, but a lot of trees down, a lot of flooding. They did a phenomenal job.
Thank you. Council Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any committee reports, but I too want to echo the great job our city staff and all the departments to handle that emergency we had with the storm and stuff. I also want to, don't forget our neighborhoods, our neighbors, that when they saw their neighbor under distress, like a tree falling, they moved to, I mean, they were quick to action to go to make sure everybody was all right. And if people couldn't get out, they brought stuff in. So kudos to our community because we are one big family.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, to go on the same theme regarding storm recovery, so we are in that process with FEMA and MIMA as it pertains to storm recovery. We'll have boots on the ground this week from both of those organizations as we do assessments of damage. Really encourage the public that if you had individual damage done as a result of this storm, there's certain criteria, but if you were to go to our link that's on our Facebook page or on the website, you'll see the link to do that individual reporting with FEMA. Encourage you to do that right away so that that can be part of their inspection list. The, and I agree with, you know, staff, one thing that we heard back from the tree crews and the CMP was that our staff had prepped all those sites very well so that when they came in, they were able to put the wires and other connections very quickly, safely. We have an internal process when it comes to down wires that fire, police, and the city electrician uses, and our agencies that come to work on that, they understand our policy, they know what the different ribbons are that are tied on wires, so they know what they can do, which makes it safe for everyone. But we hear constantly from those that we work with just how easy it is when they come into Auburn, they can quickly get things done because our team has done all the assessments and the work that was necessary. Mayor already mentioned regarding New Year's Eve, but I want to thank our sponsors and our vendors who participated in that. Staff did a great job, and our vendors, they're very much needed, they came. Food trucks were sold out pretty quickly, and, but our supporters are the sponsors for these events are what make that happen. And so we appreciate Emerson and those that participated to make that a great evening for everyone, and weather ended up being really well for us, so we appreciate those who came out. We'll have some hard numbers for you probably at the next meeting, but we're anticipating well over 5,000 people came and participated in that. We have a way to be able to look at cell phone data in a certain area around the event so we'll know exactly who came in, how many came from out of state or around the state to come in for this event as well. So we'll provide you a great report on that event. Thanks.
Thank you. There's no executive sessions tonight. The next agenda item will be adjournment. Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? We're adjourned.